Yeah.
To go into that session.
To go into that session to discuss, okay, 2.1 personnel matter, 2.2 legal matter, 2.3 legal matter. And that's it, yeah.
Someone with a second.
We'll see you in a little bit.
On favor?
On favor, yes, thank you. All right, pretty clear?
All right.
All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order for the November 1st.
And I have a question.
Is there anybody in the audience who knows how to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, my goodness.
Would you like to come help lead us in this?
Can you come up here and help us do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Or you can come right here and do it wherever you're at to go.
Okay, great, are you ready?
And we're going to face the flag and we're going to start, ready?
You go ahead, you start.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Lord for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terrific.
Wow.
That's better than the line leader, my goodness.
Like a goodness. That was really good.
Okay, thank you so much.
Very good.
So let's see, we entered into executive session around 6:45 and we discussed 2.1 personnel matter, 2.2 legal matter, and 2.3 legal matter. And we did the pledge. And let's see, do we have any comments from the public this evening? Okay, hearing none. We're going to go on. We didn't have any revisions, did we? Tonight, no. Okay, so can I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Second.
And all those in favor? Okay. And then we're going to go to the consent agenda for personnel, item 6.1, and consent agenda special services, 7.1, and then consent agenda business, 8.1. And can I have a motion to approve those tonight, please?
Someone with a second.
A second. And all those in favor? Okay. So something very exciting just happened. And you know what we just did? We just approved our, what is Kelly? Our assistant superintendent.
I got so excited.
You know, like a bottle wash.
I know. You know.
He's super, he's super.
Our assistant superintendent for business matters and business affairs. And Kelly came to us and has been a rock and has been amazing, has seen us through some difficult times, has oversaw a lot of big projects and is always there to pitch in when needed. If we have a question, he does his best to answer it immediately or goes and finds the information and gets back to us. And he has become a great member of the Fab Four, I could say. And we are very excited to offer him tenure tonight. And I'm sure Jen has a few words to say.
First, I will start with, I say mister, you say Kelly, mister. Mister. Okay, so that was the song that the kids at Coman Hill used to sing with me. When Mr. Kelly, as he was affectionately termed, went to Coman Hill every day to help deploy about 240 cars. Mr. Kelly knew every single child and what their car was. So he could look down the lane of cars and yell out five kids' names. Come on, so-and-so, 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 your cars are here. No, you're the third car. He would, you know, direct them to their parents. The parents were like, who is this giant? He had a couple of students who were their, were, Mr. Kelly was their favorite. You know, Madeline, remember she used to come out and go like this and say, you're tall, but I've got my eyes on you. And, you know, he was just a big hit there. But Kelly, all considered, I took some little notes. It's financial. It's about projects. It's about helping to steer this district through a pandemic, helping us deal with certain issues that popped up. And last, but certainly not least, just being an incredible person to other people in this district. So I want to start by a few things. Just your work over these years in the Finance Advisory Committee, which wasn't a committee that had a specific purpose before you arrived. And I think because of that, we've had really good opportunities for people on the board, Scott included, who are in the world of finance, and Mike, when he was here, to meet with our financial organizers and planners to see how is the money being allocated and what are we gaining or losing and what is at risk. And your instant knowledge of that and your ability to facilitate and answer some of those questions for the board and also to help board members take an active role in a deep dive in our financial future was really important. Kelly saved us, I think, over $300,000. That's a lot of money, right?
It is.
And he did that by refinancing what was left and available on our bonds and looking at that debt. Mr. Kelly has put together very successful budgets each of the years. We've always stayed below the tax cap. He's always also managed to help our operations and maintenance department to continue maintenance of all of our buildings, which is why, unlike other districts, we're not going out for 45 or 60 million dollar bonds just to put a roof on. Mr. Kelly was there for the whole, we'll get to projects in a minute, but also really watching our per pupil expenditures and knowing how important that is to the board and watching the changes that occurred in per pupil, explaining that to the board and explaining how factors like owning our own bus, our own bus fleet used to impact that and how things have changed since then. So really keeping on top of that through your work with ASBO and prior to you coming here, your work on Swiss chip for the health insurance for the district. Projects Kelly's worked on. That beautiful turf field that's out there, paving and expanding this parking lot. He's currently working on the high school library and lecture hall project, which will involve you taking money out of capital reserve, going out to the public, asking for a vote to spend that money. Already knee-deep, we are with architects and plans, doing all of that. Donations that we've been receiving as a district and allocating those monies. We had a beautiful donation from a family in the district, the Sammet family. And Kelly saw through to have three teacher workspaces created, air conditioning all of the buildings. Every child and their parents are going to thank you for life for making sure. And that was really also using some of the pandemic relief funds to help us do that. And assessing land that the district figured out they had one day that we didn't know we had prior to that, assessing that land and even starting to look maybe in the future for solar energy, all the work to come on electric buses, replacing water pipes. I mean, like Kelly can really do anything. I just think you should get your maintenance mechanic in electric buses and then we're going to be all set. Kelly can do everything. Gina and I will cook and Tim and whatever. We'll run the whole place. Like at that point, we won't need anybody else. Right. Pandemic, and I see Kelly's beautiful family. His beautiful wife Danielle is here, his daughter Emily and his son Desmond. And during the time of the pandemic, you probably saw Daddy a lot, right? Downstairs on his computer, talking to us all the time with a couple of dress shirts hung up nearby in case he ever needed to be on real call. You know, just helping us with predicting and ordering everything we needed for the pandemic. I just think about those like placemats that were on the desks and the masks and the face shields and the technology for the temperatures when the kids were coming in. I mean, like every single thing that went in came out. And Kelly, how you facilitated that. The federal money and how you oversaw that, your overseeing of custodians and that whole department that really needed us to reconfigure schools. When you think about it, we busted every classroom K to 5 up and the middle school as well in order to keep kids six feet apart. I mean, that comes at the hands of Kelly and his work with Steve. Issues, thank you for being there for not one but two bus fires. And thank you for helping us through all of the supply chain issues that other people seem to be facing that we're not facing here. And then as a person, Kelly is Mr. Teamwork. He's Mr. Kelly, he's Mr. Teamwork. He works really closely with Tim, Gina, and I on administrative council. He is one superintendent, assistant superintendent in my lifetime that every one of the administrators knows very well, right? And this has not always been the case before because sometimes the business official just came and worked like they were working in a business office. But because Kelly is in all of the schools all of the time, he has that connection. And that is really important when he's talking to principals about how to establish budgets. So really great. Helps us to plan the retreat for all 24 of the administrators and just generally is a very fine human being. And we are so lucky to have you here, Kelly. I don't think I covered it all, but I think you've done so much. And it's really nice. I also just want to point out that Susan, the treasurer, is here tonight.
Of course.
Susan Palamarcek. And Mary Jones, who started as my secretary, I don't know how many years ago, Mary. Right, 10 years ago. Mary's done a bunch of different jobs in the district office. And you have one of the strongest departments that I've seen in my tenure in Byram Hills four times over. So Kelly, congratulations. And on behalf of all of us, we are glad we chose you, but we're even happier that you chose Byram. And your kids should be very proud of you. And as a token of our esteem, Gina.
Yeah, I'm by that.
She had an R. We have some gifts for you guys. For you to open later. And they're all, they're all going to remind you. There's a couple of things in there. There's a, there's a nice notepad in there that has the name of our school on it. And in that notepad, you can write all kinds of letters to Daddy about things that you want. There is a little pumpkin in there because we are really in the Halloween season. And there's an owl in there. And that's always to remind you that your dad is very what? Wise. And then there's candy in there because we just like candy and there are chips. Yes. Candy and chips. So thank you for loaning Daddy to us for all the time. He comes here to work really hard because we really need him and he does a great job.
So Kelly does all the hard work and they get the kids.
Yeah. Kelly gets the tanner. That's good, all right.
Congratulations, Kelly. Should we take a minute? Are they going to wait for you or are they going to go home? They're going to go home.
Will they get a picture?
Yes.
Yeah, get pictures.
Yeah, with this in the background.
Yes, come.
We need the person who knows the Pledge of Allegiance the best.
Yes.
There you go.
There's Mr. Kelly.
That's a nice picture. Is that chair in the way?
Grab that chair.
Thanks, Mia. Thank you.
I thought Patrick was going to jump in. All right, wait, wait, wait. Mary and Susan, you got to get in one picture. Stay up there and take one more with Mary and Susan. Emily, you want to be in that one too, right? Come on, you need a, you need a department photo. Yes.
Yep, you can do it. Okay.
Emily, you going to pull us into the car? People on the way here. Go ahead. Ta-da. Good, so nice.
Congratulations.
All right, you two, well, you have to go home. Don't forget to brush your teeth before you go to bed. After you eat the chips. Yes.
So late to meet.
Thank you for coming. All right, you guys, thanks for coming. It's so good to see you. Thank you for coming. You grabbing your dad?
Thank you. This is great.
So glad you guys made it.
I know.
Aw, bye. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you for coming. Kelly, you go up there, it's dark.
I know.
Yeah. How she came up here and did the pledge.
It was so cute.
She was so confident.
And she went right up and started. She didn't even wait, she was like, I pledge allegiance.
The cutest thing was actually say, you guys, I was watching her.
I know.
Liberty.
Liberty, I saw the scene.
Liberty.
Indivisible, indivisible.
I love liberty, it was my favorite.
Liberty.
And by the way, Kelly's son is the exact same mannerisms.
I know.
He made someone smile and I was like, wow.
Okay, we're going to move on. And I just want to acknowledge, thank, something else, something lovely that just happened as well that we want to accept with gratitude, a grant from the Denise and Adam Gutstein Family Fund. And it was given in support of the BHHS Boys Basketball Program. And it was in recognition of Coach Croke's Lifetime Achievement Award and the admission of the '77-'78 men's basketball team to the Hall of Fame, which happened a couple of weeks ago.
That was amazing.
Amazing, amazing event that we had. And this is a gift of $5,000. So we want to accept that with gratitude. And thank you very much. And we're going to go to unfinished business. And I think that's the review of policies. And you want to go ahead? No, yeah. Oh, good. I missed the policy committee, sorry. I just got sentimental for the policy committee.
Sure, so I'll just highlight some of the changes in policies. 0110, sexual harassment of students and employees. You may recall that we just, not too long ago, a couple of years ago, updated, did a thorough overhaul, I think, of this policy. But NISBA had sent us some updates that were suggested and recommended to be revised. So I will just go over each part of it. There's three parts to this policy. The first one being 0110. The first change is that the title has now changed to include students and employees. When we first created this policy, just going back, we had incorporated this policy to include both students, faculty, employees, and students. There was a suggestion to separate out that policy after we had brought the policy together. So what we did was with these most recent recommendations, we were able to incorporate those revisions into one policy. And I'll outline some of the differences. So the first being that the title now includes students and employees. The second being that under definitions, as part of the New York State Human Rights Law, section 296H, we are required now to include the paragraph on, right underneath definitions, where now harassment is, I'll just read its use to not paraphrase, "It need not be severe or pervasive to be unlawful and can be any harassing conduct that consists of more than penny slights or trivial inconveniences." This was recently just discussed both in our Title IX training with our attorney as well as a lot of legal conferences in terms of really understanding that that is quite ambiguous, right? And that it's no longer this threshold where it has to be pervasive and severe, but rather it can be petty slights or trivial inconveniences, obviously leading us to investigate anything that comes our way. Additionally, and then moving, sorry, moving into the regulation, which is 0110R. Again, the title has changed to include students and employees. So it's Sexual Harassment of Students and Employees Regulation. We also made the change that I believe you all are familiar with. Last year, when you were receiving the training for sexual harassment, it had been brought up that anyone who is submitting a complaint could also come to you as Board of Education members. And we have since revised that to suggest that only if it should include the superintendent, if the complaint is regarding the superintendent, that the complainant can access the Board of Education members in that particular situation. Otherwise, they may share a complaint with a dignity act coordinator, with the building administrator, or a Title IX officer. Any questions on that? I know that had come up.
Now, I have to, you know, just on these, can you talk about these policies? Do you want to go through everything first and then?
Sure. Which are, you get, yeah.
So the one question I have is that the new definition that you're saying is coming out of the Title IX and the new law of 0110, if you look at 0110R, if you go to page 2 up on the bottom, in the middle of the paragraph, it says, unacceptable behavior must be sufficiently severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive to be considered sexually harassment. So I wonder if we just need to conform that with the new definition.
Right, so it's in conflict with what that statement is saying?
Right.
Sure. Yep, we can do that. I just would like to confer though with our attorney on that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Because this doesn't necessarily suggest that change in that particular area.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, so let's take another look at it. Is that okay?
Of course, yeah, for sure. I definitely defer to the first everyone.
It's a very low threshold.
It really is.
For sure. Okay, was there anything else, Jeff?
Very low threshold.
Curiosity, was it recommended that you put students and employees in the same policy? Or was that was a recommendation to include them together or have separate policies for employees and students?
We used that separate policy. And it was recommended that we put them together.
Together, yeah.
Yeah, there was actually two different legal recommendations. One said put it together and one said separated. So we thought they were similar enough to keep together but just separate them where we needed to make the differentiation. You go ahead. The other thing, maybe just to check with council, since you're going to talk to them anyway, towards the end of 0110R, it says, there's a section that just says that, you know, we encourage individuals to try our internal system first and before going to outside remedies. But obviously, everybody has the right to go to outside remedies. So it's very clear that everybody has the right. But just maybe just double check whether that language is something that from a legal standpoint, they're comfortable with.
And just to continue on with some of the changes as it relates specifically to students too, in terms of the investigation process and resolution procedure, students also can file a complaint either the same way an employee can using the specific form or they can have access to a DASSA form, the Dignity Act for all students, in terms of filling out whichever they choose. It just is important in this particular policy that we delineate between employees and students. That students may also take that path in terms of filling out the complaint form to bring their complaint forward using the DASSA form. And that's also highlighted in the form in Exhibit 8. And then finally, in terms of resources for all employees, we did include this in our employee compliance training as well, that the New York State Division of Human Rights established a toll-free confidential hotline. So if there's any questions regarding any behavior or any concerns in the workplace, that employees have access to this toll-free hotline where they can seek guidance and consultation pertaining to their specific situation. And finally, in terms of training, we are required to provide all of our materials as well as our training in need of languages of all employees. And then lastly, 0110-E, which is our form, our sexual harassment complaint form. You'll see in that first paragraph where it says this form is intended to be used by both students and employees, we also added the line that students may also file a complaint using the DASSA form as well. Any other questions on the sexual harassment policy?
Okay, then I will go into charging school meals, which is policy 8505. This policy just has one small change. We've been, we've revised this policy several times in recent years, but we just like to keep them updated when we get quick revision. So it's under account balances. In the paragraph, it talks about what to do, what the district is able to do and not able to do should a family have a negative account balance at the end of the year. And we're not able to involve debt collectors, as defined, and may not charge fees or interest. But also something newly added is that the district cannot file a lawsuit against students, parents, or guardians to retrieve funds. So we just wanted to put that in. We thought that was important to have in the policy.
And it doesn't turn us because the amount never is something that...
Yeah, we were just in that position, but it's just good to have the policy updated and reflect upon that. That's policy 8505. Then safety program, policy 8110. This was a change in the regulations where there used to be annual inspections for, this is when you are doing any new construction in a school district. And it's under the Health and Safety Committee, that there's a committee established to make sure that procedures are followed. It's item number two, where we just took out the annual visual inspection just when it's required by the state or commissioner of education. So we just made that change for that policy. We, yeah, that's it there. And then on policy 8220, Buildings and Grounds Maintenance and Inspection. It's a similar related item under visual inspections. It used to be annual visual inspection, but that's a longer required. So we changed that language again. And also, who would be part of the inspection team if that were to be the case? So it lists the people who would be involved in that. And that we would make that in the report available to the public. So those are the only changes, some small edits, but just keeping our policies current.
So am I going to ask for a motion for first read, but should I exclude 0110?
You can include that because it's a first read and then we'll come back in the second read with revisions and we'll.
Can I have a motion to approve the first read of policy 0110, 0110-R, 0110-E, 8505, 8110, and 8220?
So.
Second? All those in favor? Okay, thank you to Gina and Tim.
The policy committee?
And the policy committee. Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. And the policy committee, thank you, everybody.
Can't forget the policy.
Can't forget the policy. Very hard. Okay, so we're going to go on to new business, 10.1, the nomination of the NISBA Area 10 Director for a two-year term. I'm going to throw it over to our delegates. Scott, you lead.
Sure, so this is to revisit area director for NISBA that would represent our region. We voted on this in the spring. And it would be, it's usually a longer period of time that we would have to vote again, but because the person that's doing it had to step down, there was an open slot. And what I would propose, and we did a lot of work on this last time, is to vote for Cheryl Brady, who we have spoken to and have familiarity with. And she's an accomplished board member from my clients and has a lot of experience. And so I would make a motion to vote for Cheryl Brady for this position.
Anybody have any question before that? Okay, all of second and all those in favor? Okay, thank you. So we will have our Kirk vote for us for Cheryl Brady. Thank you so much.
And it should be known that we reviewed all candidates.
Yes, we did.
Each member received information reviewed.
Oh, yes, it circulated the bios around and, yes, we voted for Cheryl. Okay, and moving on to staff reports, we'll start with superintendent.
All right. We did have an opportunity to accept a beautiful letter and also a contribution in response to the amazing Hall of Fame ceremony. I went and, you know, I don't, I have not had the chance publicly to talk about it yet, but for somebody who's worked in the district as long as I had, it was like being at a family reunion. You were listening to these stories of people who were here before you and how they started things. And, you know, I spent a lot of my career with Bob Croke, who was accepted into the Hall of Fame as a coach, but he was a teacher here for many years. And just to hear that he was the coach of this 1977-78 basketball team that came back and, you know, people who feel so strongly about this school community that they're giving to the current basketball team to help them. We just, it was moving to say the least. Really well put together, thanks to Rob Castagna. Thank you to Matt Allen, who helps to run that every year. Jenny Croke helps a lot with that too, Brett Alcantara. I hope I'm not forgetting anyone. And also, we have some people in the community who are constant contributors to that Hall of Fame in every way, from helping and organizing. The Di Pietro's were there. They are just, like, I feel like they're a household name for me. When I show up at Byram Hills events and they're there, I saw them at their inception with their children when they were young, and now as community members, just continuing to be a part of our community. Just amazing. I want to remind you that we have our Board of Education retreat November 15th at 7:00 in the district office, and we will be talking about community engagement. Our December curriculum conversation is our next Board of Ed meeting, and that will be on December 6th. And we're going to be meeting in Bobcat Hall.
Did you say December?
December.
Wasn't it just Halloween?
Yeah, I know. I know. Well, that's what happens with those October, November, December. And then we have two to three a month.
The budget.
After budget season. And so we will meet in Bobcat Hall at the high school, and Tim's going to facilitate our conversation on literacy. We're going to be joined by the expert consultants. We had an incredible first meeting with them. They are the experts in the field. I think that our teachers, our parents, our administrators were just in awe from what they learned. So this will be a great opportunity. And we're going to have Peggy McInerney and Dave Mack joining us for that conversation.
Great.
And we have, our finance advisory committee is going to meet also before that next meeting. And then Board of Education members, if you could just pay attention to the organization meeting. We are looking to do it on Tuesday, July 11th, and we'd really like to know at the next board, by the next board meeting, if you think that that date works for you for our reorg meeting, July 11th.
At 7:00 AM, right?
At 7:15, yeah. And we. Yep. And then December 6th, in addition to, we are also going to have the National Merit and Cum Laude Student Recognition. So that's why we'll also be in Bobcat Hall. Super fun. And that was also an incredible ceremony. And thank you to Sandy Act. I'm going to do my student highlights in 10 seconds. So I think I'm ready to go with those, Tim. I'm on slide, only slide 24 of this year. I think each year my slide deck, like during COVID, it was in like the 300 and 400 pages by this time. All right. So first, we have our Alzheimer's Club Gaga and our co-presidents Emily Stangle and Remy Matza. And we have Vice President Ashley Stangle, and to be believed, they raised close to $32,000 in the Alzheimer's. With a goal of getting to $50,000, they're also anticipating a Gaga Ball Tournament coming up as well. And I just want to say all of the teams that came out, if you could take a look at the bottom picture, full teams that came out to do that walk. It was pretty amazing.
Very cool.
We had our 17 students, as I said, inducted into Cum Laude. Their names are over here. It was an absolutely beautiful evening. Parents were very excited to be there. Chris Walsh did a spectacular job with his speech, and it was beautiful to see Sandy Act keeping that society alive for us. We had eight Byram Hills High School music students who were chosen to participate in Area All-State. We have, you can see their names here and their class years anywhere from 2023 to 2025. So congratulate to our Area All-Stars. And athletic news. Yay! Chloe Bernstein and Jenek Heineman crowned New York State Doubles Champions. We had the whole kit and caboodle when they got off the highway, the fire truck, the police car, the escort here, the football team, the cheerleaders, and a bunch of other people were here to see them and receive them. And we're so incredibly proud. This is, this is it. I mean, this is the limit to which they could have gone. That's pretty incredible.
Amazing.
So congratulations to both of them. And then we have girls tennis, oh, again, regional champions. And they are going to play at the U.S. Tennis Center November 4th and 5th weekend. I think it's just November 4th that they're playing though, right Gina? Isn't it just Friday?
It should be.
Yeah, it should be just Friday. So in the morning, if they win, they move on to the final round. And should they move on to the final round, I know at least Gina and I are hopping in the car and going down there, which will be great for the afternoon. Lo-Hud Player of the Week, Aiden Hefner. Congratulations, Aiden, varsity soccer. Lo-Hud Player for the week of October 24th. And then look at all these postseason highlights. Angelina Nye, Westchester County Cross Country Freshman Champion. She placed first in the race with a time of 10 minutes 57 seconds. Amelia Wilt-Petersen also medaled, placing 17th out of 48 finishers with a time of 12:32 on the one and a half mile course. These are like numbers I can never imagine. On October 27th, Varsity Girls Volleyball defeated Irvington and advanced to the quarterfinals to play Hen Hood on Tuesday, November 1st.
They lost.
I know. But that's okay. They got far.
They did.
Varsity Football improved to 8-1 with a win over Briar Cliff last week and will host Nanuet this Saturday in the Class B semifinals. Yes, I'll be there. Varsity Cheerleading will compete in a multi-school tournament in New Rochelle High School on Sunday. Super exciting. Our cheerleaders are amazing. I was like, I couldn't get over their halftime show. It was like something out of one of those Texas schools where they're like competing. I swear to God.
You're absolutely right.
It really was. Yeah, it's like amazing. And then Varsity Swimming Relay Teams are competing in swim trials November 7th at Felix Festin Middle School, which is less than a mile from my home, and I will be there.
Yay!
And that's it. That's to all our fall teams.
Thank you so much. Let's see. Anything?
Just to give you an update on some curriculum topics. So Jen mentioned the literacy study was really successful. I sent out a survey to the study group and got feedback, and everyone just seemed very positive about what we were learning and the, sort of the tips we were learning about how to help kids read in the classroom and how parents can help. And our two expert consultants were sharing their own stories. One of them shares a lot of stories about her own daughter and things she did with her own daughter that were examples of what we were looking at at the time, one of the developmental stages, which is emergent literacy. So when kids are just starting to learn how to read and what that entails. So we'll be looking at, the next stage will be November 7th will be our next meeting. So we'll read back again next week and we'll dive in. All of this information is on our website. We put all the readings and articles and the presentations from the study group on the curriculum webpage, so you can check that out. And we'll be holding some public meetings as well. Our first one will be November 29th, which will be a K-5 Principals Coffee, where anyone in the community can come. And our expert facilitators will be there to give us a summary of what we're talking about and answer some questions from the parent community. They will also be providing for the study group office hours in December. So they're going to give the study group a chance to come in and meet with them and ask some specific questions. Because a lot of people have their own questions they want to ask about their own specific situations. Our teachers can go, our administrators, and our panels can go to that. The second topic is, which is stemming from the literacy study, is looking at, we're going to do an inventory of our literacy assessments. How are we assessing students from kindergarten? We're going to go up through eighth grade, and we're going to start looking at that in the second half of this year by just looking at what assessments were given at each grade level, what their purpose is. And then that'll give us sort of a map of where we need to go. So are these the right assessments? Are there other assessments we should be giving? Are we giving too many assessments? Are they duplicate? Are we using the data in the right way? So we're going to have our expert consultants from the literacy study come work with us internally and start helping us do that step. So that's sort of something we can start right now this year even. And it sort of came up during this, during the literacy study. That's a quick thing we can start working on right now and do that, an internal analysis. Third item I just wanted to mention was an update on David Dashboard. So we've been through a real journey here with changing of David Dashboard. So we had purchased one about five years ago. That company was bought by another company and then they dissolved it. So we switched to another product. We're having a little bit of doubts about that product that's really going to serve our needs. So Andrew and I are just doing a little bit of a search again to see if there's some other things. We've been hearing about some good products from some other districts that we're using. So we're exploring those over the next month, and we may come back. And we're going to compare it to the dashboard that we currently have. We just have some trouble importing the data and its usability. So we're not sure it's going to really meet the needs that we have right now. So I think we can make it work, but we just want to make sure we're, it's a big process to go through this, to bring in all this data into a dashboard, that we want to make sure we're making the right decision. So we keep pausing on that a little bit, just so we can take some other avenues to make sure it's the right product for us. Fourth thing is K-5 Science. So during the 2019-2020 school year, we convened a science committee to start looking at the new standards and start preparing for that. That kind of interrupted by the pandemic, and we're bringing that committee back together to start looking at science programs. As you will recall, we're not giving a fourth grade science test this year. But next year, the new science assessment will begin, and that will be in fifth grade. It's one of the new fifth grade assessment in the following year of 2024, as well as a new eighth grade assessment. So all those assessments will be aligned to the new standard. So we're looking at some new programs. And I'll be meeting with the science reps in December to look at three different programs. We'll certainly bring any information to you to adopt. Does it change the amount of science, or does it just change the topics? Yeah, it's really the topics. We probably have to do a little more science. We'll have to figure that out. But I think a lot of it can be done through literacy by doing more informational tests and being more efficient and interdisciplinary by curriculum connecting literacy to science. That's something we're doing now, particularly at Wampus. There's a lot of that happening already. And our startup entrepreneurship course, we just had what's called mentor matchup last week, which was really, really amazing. We have 17 parents volunteering to work as mentors, and then we have another like dozen of them working as coaches. So 17 parents came in, and the way this run, we have three sections. So parents were assigned to a certain section of one of the three sections of startup. And the kids pitched their business ideas to the mentors in like a speed dating type of round. They have like five minutes. You go and the parents rotate it. The parents also were pitching themselves to the teams. And at the end, the kids got to choose which parent they wanted, like they ranked the five parents or six parents, and the parents got to rank the students. And the teachers wouldn't match them up. They didn't tell them who ranked what or anything. All that's great.
Although I have a pair tape, and I got my team. I have a team ranked number one.
Yeah, that was like the goal, was to try, it's one or two, trying to get them.
And she was like, I wanted to buy two of the products.
There's some really good ideas, and I was there for two of the class sections and to see these parents ask amazing questions of our kids and our kids being able to answer them. And our kids were really nervous. Lisa Palopria, who's one of the instructors, called me the next day, and she said, oh my God, the kids like begging me not to do anything. They were so tired from the day before and so stressed. But they really worked hard to prepare their pitches for our parents. I really want to thank our parent community for being so involved in this program. It's phenomenal. So that's been going well. And now the mentors will work with those teams and check in with them on a weekly basis. And the kids will have their mid-year pitch in February, where they might get some small amount of funding to put some things together, whatever they might need to get their product to the next level. Then they have a pitch on May 22nd, which will be the pitch night. Five teams will be selected to compete. You know, and that comes from another academic pitch before then.
Tim, at some point, would you bring some of these teams in the center?
Absolutely.
Do you do that with global scholars? I have heard.
Right, we did that earlier, so we'll certainly do that.
We'd love to do that. Love to hear their ideas. Yeah, thank you. Is this juniors and seniors in the same class?
Yes. Yep. Yep. So sort of like global scholars, you could take it either as a junior or a senior. So there are seniors in the class as well.
Can you take it junior and senior? Like, can you continue in there?
They could be right. So juniors will continue next year if they want to take the second year. Seniors will be gone. But if they want to stay involved in the business, that's going to be up to the individual teams to figure that out once they start, if their business gets to the next level. Year two of the program is trying to really launch your business and take it to the next level.
I'm sure the juniors are not on the pitch team.
They are.
Oh, they are. Oh, they're combined.
Yes, oh yeah, they're combined. So everyone has, every student in the class is part of a team developing their ideas and will compete for a stage on that pitch night. We have what's called, yeah, April, there's an academic pitch where all teams go. And then we have panels, which will be made up of parents. So parents will serve on our pitch committees, and they'll be making the final decision and giving business advice to the kids. So just to have that knowledge of our community coming out right into our classroom. Apparently, there was a lot of buzz. The kids sort of knew some of the parents coming in, and they were really chatting like, oh my God, can you believe this? Some teams coming in, and we're going to get the pitch to them. This was a big deal for our kids. It's like a big deal. They were nervous. So I'm just so proud of getting this curriculum off the ground with 63 students this year and having so far, you know, two dozen parents coming in to work with our kids. It's just one of the best gifts our kids could have is the knowledge of our community and that experience. So thanks to our community for doing that. It's really remarkable.
And thank you guys for putting this together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Excited.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, Kelly.
Yeah, just quickly, I want to just keep you up to date on the High School Learning Commons Project. We just, last month, came up with the design, the scope of the project. We're still waiting for the budget estimates. We should have those before Thanksgiving, the next couple of weeks. Once we have that, we'll bring it to you guys to present it. A really exciting project. So looking forward to doing that.
So we received the plans, but we received no financial budget.
Yeah.
We're not showing this to anyone until we know how much it costs.
That's right. It's a, it's a great design. It's beautiful. So look forward for you guys to see that in December. And then, you know, just to continue that timeline, to remind you, we'll be talking about it from December to the budget vote. And then it'll be presented in the budget vote in the ballot. And then from June to September, you know, we'll start getting SCD approval, getting the permits. And then we'll probably bid it out in December, January 2024 and start the project when school ends, 2024 summer. So hopefully get it done that summer and be able to start that school year with everything done. So that's the timeline, if everything works out, back on wood. The High School Water Project, we're still waiting approval from the Department of Health. So I just want to keep you updated. It's still a process. And just as a reminder, we put in March of 2022 for the approval. So it's been seven months. So we're still hanging on. But that's where we are on that. And then the Per People Report, I wanted to do it tonight. Unfortunately, the state is a little behind on the, on the reports. You know, we submit the report, big surprise, submit the report end of September, and they're still reviewing. Already got approved, which is good. But there's eight or nine districts in the area that still haven't been approved yet. So once I get that, I'll have all the data, and I can kind of do a deep dive, present to the board, and go a little deeper with the finance advisor committee and just go from there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. And let's see board reports. I don't have anything anymore.
He's been around and around to the older things.
Yes, I did tonight.
Today.
Today. Blur. The book fairs have been a huge success so far. It's just great to hear them actually making money when they've made it quite some time, which is great. The directories have been printed, and they're going out next week. And we have feedback from all the different school committees. Everything seems to be, a lot of activities on.
A lot. The PTSA is doing so much right now. Yeah.
Very, very busy.
They had an insane number of home window painting. There's not a window left in our home. They have to.
It's always such a creative venture.
It's a creative, yeah. And it's a nice spot for it too.
Yeah.
And then we had also the Athletics Advisory Committee met this week.
Yeah, we're just reviewing. Trump coming.
And the main goals, I guess, for this semester was to, to look at our modified sports and how they're integrating into JV and varsity. So we're still taking a deep dive into that.
Okay, any other?
Two quick things. On Thursday, this Thursday night, there's going to be a Westwood Symposium, and it's virtual. So it's really easy to join on, it's an interesting topic, student autonomy and flexibility around homework assessments and scheduling. There's a speaker coming in. I'm sure there'll be, yeah, a lot of questions. And so that's one thing to mention. If anybody wants to join that, it's Thursday night. And then the second thing is this is a VHF meeting, and they're firing all cylinders, very active, and lots of good things going on there too. So both the PTSA and the VHF are going to have a very strong start.
Okay, great. Let's see. Any communications to the board? Does anybody have any communications? Not that I'm aware of. Okay, none. And can I, anybody have anything about the minutes? I read them. I didn't have anything. Does anybody have any? Nope. Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the, sorry, October 11th meeting?
Some of the second.
All those in favor? Okay. And can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of the second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Congratulations, Kelly.
Congratulations, Kelly.
Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Kelly.